We call the County Council meeting of September fourteenth to our. Colonel, would you have the okay before please?
Glory, thank you for your presence with us today. We just ask you to give us wisdom and guidance as we discuss in this hour. The people's business, the county can, and we pray that you bless us as a county and as a state and nation.
We do it ladies a little bit different. We're gonna have the public hearing on these ordinances and then I'll have third reading if you pass. Then we'll go into the mid, the regular meeting. Okay? All right, uh, on August twenty twenty dash thirteen is orders to amend orders twenty nineteen dash twelve to increase water waste on rates for the County County municipal. For the waste water system. I have any questions on that? Okay, with no questions, I'll ask for a motion for third reading on August twenty twenty dash thirteen.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any more questions? All the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All the votes? All right, on August twenty twenty dash fourteen, the ordinance to amend section twenty six of the code of ordinances for County County to provide for their payment of excessive noise and nuisance and forceful intercept criminal penalties or fee and to comply after notice. I have any, anybody want any questions on that?
Y'all may notice that the title changed slightly from the last reading because I had not put noise in the title. And that was part of it. So the title is a little different. It's the same exact rule.
So if I had any questions. If not, then the August twenty twenty dash fourteen is now over. I have a motion we approve third reading on August twenty twenty dash fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more questions? All the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All the votes? Now, uh, we're gonna start with the minutes. I have a motion we approve the August forty four twenty twenty regular meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more questions? All the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All the votes? Anybody, Dave, have you got the committee report? Again? John? Jason?
No.
Uh, we got one appointment, the nomination to the County County Library Board from District Three.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Kay James to be the Library Board Member from our District Three.
Kay who?
Kay James.
James?
Second.
So it'd be second? Okay, if, uh, anybody have any other question? All the favor of nominations, aye?
Aye.
All the votes? The next thing on the agenda is proclamation of ordering Kennedy Rickbeck away services to TRMC Board of Trustees. Take the tray down over here, please, man. Get us some. Oh, this say rule. This is my old buddy. You know, me and I could talk to the stories and y'all might believe some of them, but you wouldn't believe them all, but it'd all be true. So he knows I'm a slow reader, so he'll bear with me. N T Rickbeck proclamation whereas N T Rickbeck was appointed in January two thousand and three to represent County County with the Board of Trustees of the Regional Medical Center. And whereas Mr. Rickbeck served on numerous performance committees in his capacity as a trustee until his resignation effective March twenty first, twenty twenty. Having been voted R M C Trustee of the Year in twenty ten, he also served on the Finance Committee for many years. With a number of those as chairman, the Management Oversight Committee, the Security Committee, the Planning Committee, Human Resource Committee, Bylaws Committee, the R M C Foundation Board, and is Chair of the Ad hoc Radiology Committee. Whereas during his seventeen year, ten years trustee, the Regional Medical Center has expanded its services to include the Mayberry Center for Cancer Care, a Level Three Trauma Center, the Breast Health Care Center, the Dialysis Access Institute, as well as the Joint Commission for Transcendental Stroke Center. And whereas Mr. Rickbeck represented County County in a professional and honorable manner on the Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees for seventeen years, now therefore be at plain. This the fourteenth day of September twenty twenty, and County County Council have acknowledged and honors Mr. Rickbeck for his, Mr. Kennedy Rickbeck for his services to County County and the Regional Medical Center. And we appreciate everything you did, appreciate everything you did for your twenty-four years as administrator here, getting started.
Thank you, Mr. Summow.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. This is an honor. I'll take my ass off, but I can't talk to you, uh, paper stuff. I don't think you and I catch.
Well, I've had a couple of them tell me if I didn't have this one on, if I had a lunge one on, I could breathe through it.
Anyway, I wanna thank the council for all the years of y'all's support, reappointing me. Serving on that board has really been, it was a challenge for me. I put in a lot of hours over there. When I accepted the job back in January of two oh three, I was told by my good friend here, it was gonna be one meeting a month. Well, he didn't tell me later on it would be at least one meeting a week. He didn't tell me later on it was gonna be two or three meetings a week maybe. So that's what I inherited, which I enjoy the majority of my time serving on the board. I made a lot of friends over there. I, um, enjoy working with the CEO, uh, the Andersons there, then Charles came in, and working with the staff that was there. We as board members should be just like you as council members. We're there to set policy, and you hire somebody to take it out, and it's wasn't there for us to micromanage. That's a problem we were beginning to have on the board. I saw that it was coming. And not only with that, my health, I didn't feel like I could spend two or three days over there a week. And so I started resigning. I'd been telling him for six months, trying to get me a replacement, kept putting it off, putting it off, so I decided to give him a little letter here and said, my date is March thirty first of twenty twenty. But anyway, uh, again, I wanna thank council for supporting me all these years. It's, it's been a challenge, and it's gonna be, continue to be a challenge. Y'all has appointed some good members over there. Uh, I hope that they'll take, take it to heart, do what they're supposed to do, and not try to micromanage and be a part of the system. That's all I have to say. Any questions, sir?
Nope. Give me a hand here.
I don't know, shit, you're in one of them. How about that? Is that good? You got filming there?
Hey, Brady, why?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. That's it, sir?
Yeah, man.
Will y'all excuse me?
Thanks, sir.
I have another task.
John, you're gonna have to do like this. When they start walking that whole yap and that, you just keep on walking, okay, I'm saying. Okay, Deputy Minister of Service Director Rod Gibson. I thought I saw Rod in here.
Rod, you make sure that light stays on. It should have green light.
Yeah, that's all.
Turn that around, Rod, if you want to.
Denise asked me to give you a look, excuse me, this thing's hot. Take it, take it off. Denise asked me to give you a little update on the N S S D control. Since we began litter control and we starting up the recycling program here very shortly on March ninth of this year, we've had two county employee cleanups, and one was run by the fire departments. Got together on Saturday. That was on April twenty ninth to thirteenth at fifty, with a total of five hundred and thirty-five bags of waste, thirty-six tires, with a total weight of six thousand eight hundred pounds. As of August eighteenth, litter control has picked up seventeen hundred sixty-eight bags of waste. Also applied for a tree grant, a pound of pride, and we will know something on August first that we will receive any. Uh, seventeen sixty-eight bags weighed a total of six thousand seven hundred and fifty pounds as well. Excuse me, thirteen thousand nine hundred pounds. Which brought us up to six point seven five tons of garbage. I placed twenty, no litter signs out so far, but some cameras started being placed today. Hopefully we can catch somebody. They're pretty smart. They don't put it there, they mail in the trash, they throw the trash out. I plan to have another cleanup hopefully in this fall, late fall, and maybe one with the Sandy Run group for the Christmas play. That's about all I got on litter right now, except it's a big problem, it's gonna get worse, and it's, it's an awful lot for us to even go to camp and show. On the S D control side, we've had a really low complaint basis this year, first time in years we've had maybe fifty. We normally have one twenty-five to one fifty each year. I did, I did do a lot, a larger side this spring than I hadn't been able to do in the past. Which really helped the lock for the hatch offs in certain areas, you know? Towards the barns area around the swamp, a little part towards the lake, we still got normal complaints. And we also cut out double siding time down to about six hours a week, which is such a chemical, it's a half, which is saving this money. We only use about a hundred and eight gallons this year compared to the normal three hundred plus this time. So everything gonna be, it's going smooth, and that's all I have. We don't ask any questions.
So, appreciate what you're doing. I tell you, I wish we could catch so many people.
Oh, yeah, I'm playing on it. I'm playing on it.
These, these kids and all, they know better than to throw that trash out.
Yeah. But I got cameras on the concrete areas where it's worth it.
And you can, you can believe I don't throw it out, just, my wife rides with me, we go to the derry or something in Orangeburg. She'll say, I don't wanna ride that filthy car you over, you got too much trash in there. I just don't wanna throw it out, and I throw the bottles open down the side. And, uh, but anyhow, we appreciate everything, Rod.
Rod.
Y'all got any questions?
Yeah, I, I, well, Jay, you have one?
No.
Uh, when I first came on council a few years ago, and I will admit that I, I jumped the rabbit, but I didn't run. Um, I asked about whether it would help to put signs out direct. I know that in Oconee County where I got another house up there, they got signs out on the major highways directing people into the dump sites. And, uh, you know, theirs are full time, so they don't have to have times on them. But I've often wondered if maybe some of those people like coming down six oh one, would turn in there and throw somebody's trash in the dump site if they, or in other locations.
I have to find out from DOTs and the state highway.
Yes.
I've requested help from them twice already.
Well, I can say just something that says, hey, you know, let's place here, put your trash in, it's open such and such an hour or something like that.
I'll do that.
Just ask about it and see what, what happens. Okay, thank you.
Don't, don't put one down there to camera coming in from Orangeburg, 'cause we getting too much Orangeburg County trash now.
Alright, oh, okay.
Alright, thank you, Rod. Okay, Deputy Minister of Financial Officer Denise Preston.
Good evening, y'all. So, it's that time of year again. We set millage. We are scheduled to send a tax levy letter out, uh, October first. I think that's on Friday. So since we're down to one meeting a month, we've got to set millage tonight. Um, I gave you handouts of what our millage rates are currently, and I've highlighted at the bottom of this schedule what I'm proposing this year. The school is not going up on their mills, they're not asking for an increase this year. Um, our cap is one point eight one percent, which gives us two mil, a two mil increase. And luckily this year, we collected about seventy thousand dollars more in local option sales tax revenue. And what that does is it increases the credit factor for the residents' tax notices. So even though we'll go up two mills, the credit should offset that. According to my calculations, it offsets it. So I'm proposing a two mil increase this year to go up to the cap. And that's what I proposed.
Okay. If I got your question?
Okay, so that's the millage, uh, and we'll vote on that by resolution, right? Okay, and so the supplemental appropriation for the water department, sorry, I got all tracked there. Uh, supplemental appropriation for the water department, we applied today for a grant and for a water line extension and improvements. And the grant calls for a thirty-five thousand dollar match. So I'm requesting to amend the water department's budget for this year to cover that thirty-five thousand dollar match, as well as increasing the budget totally by a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and I'll tell you why. So remember earlier this year when we refunded our bond, um, for the water department, and we refinanced it to get a lower rate and save all the interest? So at that time, we had three water bonds, one, and we still have three now, but one of them is like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the payout. So originally, I wondered whether it would be feasible to pay off the small bond in this year's budget or to just, um, fund the cushion for the new bond, 'cause you have to have a year's debt cushion. So that cushion is seventy-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, and I've decided to go that route. Um, it wouldn't save us enough money to pay off that small bond, because all we're paying basically is, is print for right now. So I'm proposing to amend the budget by a total of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to cover the match, to cover the bond cushion, and to put sixty-five thousand four forty back into miscellaneous capital plan item account to cover the water breaks until we get these water lines fixed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to agree grant, supplemental appropriation for a water department that's presented by the C I Board.
Okay. Alright, we don't. Do we need to vote?
Yes, sir.
On that now?
Yes, sir.
I have a second, uh, ten votes?
Second.
You say, any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All the votes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on the bill of direct, do we? What are we, we got the pass that thing? The resolution, uh, four dash twenty twenty setting the minimum loss credit factor for the twenty 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 twenty-one fiscal year. I have a motion that we approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more questions? All the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All the votes? Okay. Alright, anybody have any old business come up at this time? Other new businesses, anybody have any new business needs to be brought up? Y'all, I, I only ask you, uh, I meant to call Vicki today and I forgot. Trying to get EMS here. I had a friend down at, uh, Preston. She lives about two miles going through, two miles from the station, going through, uh, Elrie. And, uh, Bill failed the other day in the yard and broke her hip, broke her right leg, or right leg. And thank goodness she had a cell phone. Well, the cell phone called nine one one, it called Orangeburg nine one one. And of course, she said they immediately got calling it nine one one, County County, Orangeburg. And I appreciate that. But, uh, and, uh, uh, what else? Oh, it, it took a while for the ambulance to get there, about fifteen to twenty minutes. Was that, was that ambulance moved up to Settleness to cover?
It has temporarily, yes, sir.
Temporarily moved to Settleness to cover, okay, well, that's that. But anyhow, see if you can find out what's, why. She, uh, she probably lives five miles in County County from, you know, the Orangeburg County line down there on school number six. But, um, anyhow, it got over there, and that fact, the day was a birthday, and, uh, Nancy called and she's supposed to get out of therapy Friday. Just check on that one, because.
We have the same following, same room. Might as well make it. Happens all the time.
Is that right here?
Legs in camp.
That's my water tower.
You'll find it's pretty.
Yeah, check on both of them.
Alright.
Good. Okay, uh, anybody else have a few business? Dr. Mullin, you got anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, sir. We have our Transportation Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday at two o'clock, and I know that your administrator will be there, as well as the rest of your folks. Look forward to a good conversation, um, regards to our transportation improvement plans, sir.
Okay, good, thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
We're gonna worry, hand you one of this. Deputy Minister, you got?
Yes, sir. Counsel, one of the things that, uh, I wanted to start doing here with you is for our new employees to come on to the county, getting them to come to at least one council meeting, so you can lay your eyes on them and they can see you. Uh, that was something that I thought worked well in my previous life, and being able to see who you're talking to. We're still small enough in County County to, uh, to have a family environment like that. I'll ask Ms. Brandy Rokerson, our H R Director, to, uh, announce the, uh, new employees.
I'm just gonna.
Have them stand, have them stand.
Just stand.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have them stand up and tell you their names and their position, uh, and also their supervisors are here with them. So, uh, first up is your David Smith, um, he's our new animal control officer, and his supervisor Bobby's here with him. Oh, sorry. Um, we also have Ms. Christine Gaskins, um, she's our new library cataloger and outreach assistant, and Ms. Kristin is here with her. Um, Nancy Smith, the new accessory clerk, and Steve's here as well. We have Mr. Sam Jackson, um, he's our new maintenance employee in the Building and Grounds Department. And then we also have a new slash old employee, um, he's got a new position, so we wanted to also, um, introduce him tonight. Mr. Mark Bregman, um, is now gonna be our procurement and grading officer, but he'll also be overseeing, uh, Building and Grounds.
Alright, thank you, Brandy.
Thank you, thank y'all for, just like Brandy said, uh, Johnson is a small county, we all like family here. Sometimes we get the fuss and the family moves on.
Mr. Chairman, I've got two other things real quick. Uh, like Denise mentioned, we did today apply for South Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Infrastructure Grant. And that's for a section of line, uh, a new section of line on one seventy-six in Sandy Run area. It's an older line, uh, that we inherited, and, uh, we're getting a number of breakages, leakages, things of that nature on that section of water line, and have been for quite a time. So we feel like we can, if we can repair that portion, uh, then that would, that would keep us from having to spend so much money from a maintenance and operations standpoint on getting it fixed so regularly. Like Denise said, that's a thirty-five thousand dollar match, going toward a half a million dollar project, okay? So that's a half a million dollars, but a thousand dollar match. The second thing that I've got is we, speaking of Sandy Run, we've got, uh, a zoning, rezoning meeting coming up on the twenty fourth, next Thursday. It's gonna be at the, at the Beulah Methodist Church and the gymnasium. We have advertised, uh, for this, uh, we'll continue to advertise for this to try to get the most response that we can. Last week, we sent out all of the, the ordinance, we sent the mapping out, and we sent a flyer out, uh, to the general public so they can start reviewing and have good questions when the twenty fourth comes. And so, uh, that will be the last public meeting for that zoning. We will not be voting that night, but we are planning on voting in October, okay?
And what's the time?
It's at five, from five thirty to seven thirty at, at Beulah Methodist Church there in Sandy Run. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
John, let me just say in regard both of those, uh, appreciate John and staff picking this up with the water situation we got. We have had some, significant number of breaks on that particular line that goes up the hill with the high pressure and the aging line and everything. And, uh, are you gonna, you gonna be able to announce later about how we're working on all the entities to work this? Is this, yes, I won't guess. But anyway, in terms of how we're doing that, that's great. But I wanted to point out that that's, this is the fruition of us having increased those rates over the last five, six years. Now, we're at that point, now we gotta start replacing, this is what we're building to all along. So this is the payoff, if you would, 'cause we gotta have these lines to be consistent, not breaking, and I appreciate your quick attention to that. With regard to the zoning meeting, this is something we've been going through quite some time, I've kind of driven this, uh, particularly in our area, knowing that we're gonna have a heavy development in Sandy Run. And zoning is one of those things that, that obviously brings a lot of attention to the public, and we're, we're seeing that, and that's a good thing, and we're glad the public is fully engaged, and we're gonna have a facility. I appreciate, uh, Beulah Church taking that on line, we have that venue, because frankly, we'll uh, I hope have a, a large crowd, there are large, extensive crowd, with social separation, all the things that are relative to COVID at this time. But I appreciate your staff putting that together and, and working through this whole process, uh, with the guard and the rest of the folks, and then Bob, Steve and the staff. And, uh, I'm confident we're gonna be able to take in all the, uh, you know, the constituents, interest there, some of the things that have been brought up are very valid. And then we're working through a good process to make sure that the landowners and business owners' interests are protected while we look to the future, and make sure that as we do get development, that we'll have a Sandy Run fifteen, twenty years that we'll all appreciate. That's what we're working forward to. Appreciate your efforts, and I'm glad, so, sir. Paul, now?
Okay, thank you, John. Yeah, I, I went through that a day, and I hadn't been through it in several months. I tell you, seems like you just grow and go on, you want the Sandy Run all the time.
You're not gonna stop. So we got to get it, get out of it, and that's, that's what we're doing. It's a little bit, uh, discussion we have to go through. But what we find, we just have to do it the way we're doing, keep folks involved in it, and we'll, we'll get to it.
That's right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim. The other thing is we have executive session, and, um, after the executive session, we have, we come back into open session, and we have to vote on a resolution five dash twenty twenty. So if anybody wants to wave around. I have a motion that we, uh, go into second session, to take up contract out of the County County, so that's moved it, and he can also develop the amount of project out, I'll be.
So moved. Second. Second.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, uh, I think we gonna bring out of executive session is a vote on resolution five dash twenty twenty, uh, for project out, out, out here. A resolution to develop a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Orangeburg County. Such industrial business park to be geographically located in Cabinet and Orangeburg Counties and established pursuant to section four dash one dash one seventy of the South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen seventy-six as amended, to enter into a written agreement with Orangeburg County to provide for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue application, and the distribution of fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes to the counties and relevant taxing entities, and to provide that tax credits allowed by law be provided for industries or businesses locating in said park and to prevent a use of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes. I have a motion that we approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We move down some.
Uh-huh?
Yeah.
Here and, uh, cease. Okay, so, uh, any more discussion on that? All in favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Alright.
Chair, I move it up.
Okay, have a second to that?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Alright.